Five A. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you mind maybe some hurt?
Sure. Keep all your heads please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the glorious day that we had today. We pray that you watch over the activities in the meeting tonight, that they can honor you and that they can represent those in our community. And we just thank and praise you for all the gifts you give us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, reading approval of minutes from August 3rd, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you. Approval of the agenda, please. Any changes or additions?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Keller.
Second.
And second by Stern. Any discussion? Jeez. Sorry.
Sorry.
Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna get through your waste and then work that for you.
Alright, five A. Engineering agenda.
What would you like me to say?
Welcome in person, thank you.
Thank you.
You're fine right there.
Right there?
Okay.
I don't have much for everybody. Thank you for letting me do the last few over the phone, that's been helpful. Really, Street Project, only thing that's lingering that we have to wrap up this fall is the assessments. I know Monty's working with that committee, so there will be, I don't know how engaged he has been recently, but there will be a preliminary list prepared by them, and then it'll be published in the newspaper. We keep public hearing dates set, and then beyond that, it'll go back to City Council for the final approval before they're set, set for the county, and on people's taxes, December, January, who payments due after that. I'll probably attend the meeting, the public hearing, support the project, but other than that, we won't have much to do this time of year. Just know what's happening. Sanitary sewer issues on Fifth, we'll update there. Expedition Estates, big picture. We understand that's kind of tied up and delayed at the moment, and we're kind of just monitoring the situation. I haven't heard anything different since the last Monty's shaking his head, so, yeah, alright. Short-term, smaller thing, is just that we got a quote for repairs on Eleven. Beck Tole was cleaning an area, they didn't report originally. We took that quote after the last meeting, so it was the calls for the city, about twenty grand to fix those low areas. And I know Monty shared that with Williams Building Company, because we would like them to hire the company themselves and do the work. Paving can be done up till about the first November, it's a temperature thing, so we have time. I don't know that we, that was two weeks ago. Monty, have you heard anything back from?
No, they were contacting the Beck Tole Con construction themselves to get a firm estimate to just change some of those rings and do the...
And they might be trying to work them down a little bit, but more private developers, working contract, whatever they want, but I just feel like we have a little bit of time. But we don't want to wait too long. The whole intention was to get low areas fixed before winter, so we don't have snowfall or issues or damages fall, so. I would say we can, there's no problem waiting another thirty days. It's just a matter of making sure that they can get the work done before November.
Well, is Beck Tole in the U L right now?
Yes, they are.
So, how long?
They had some mold figured into their costs.
Okay.
They just said it's a small amount, it's not a big deal. They will do it later. We, I mean, it'd be nice if developers just took it and did it, otherwise, we could get stuck for it, doing it ourselves. But it's just one of those things that in the next month, we might have to make a decision. I assume we'll just wait on that? Yep.
What can we, what is the road? One?
Eleven? That might be tough. I don't know if it's warranted yet. Eleven is rough, is it? I think I've driven on it a little bit.
Yeah, that one did, but then the risers on the map was replying.
I mean, we didn't have a road there before.
You can think it's unsafe, but I hadn't driven on it for a while. Is it getting bad?
It's drivable.
It's drivable. Alright.
I would say if it gets to wintertime and we have to avoid that, whoever's lighting the road needs to be well aware of what's going on.
How many tenants do we have living up there? There's four of those properties are sold, there's two more that will be moving in in September.
So, you can't really close that off?
I don't know.
The biggest risk if we fix it ourselves is that we don't hear it first, but sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do. Anyway, so I'll just leave that on my agenda here. Water storage stuff. Money's been secured from State Water Commission. We're kind of just going about this slow, you know, the State Water Commission doesn't have the funds. We told them that our schedule is more so construction next year, theory is. So, I'm not pushing this very hard, kind of just letting things play out. Environmental part is happening right now, so we got an environmental solicitation, we let her back and said we have to have the archaeologists go look at it. We approved that at the last meeting. They're going out there tomorrow, they have to do a walk-through and they'll kind of just let us know what they find, if anything, and then we'll have a report before your next meeting. Assuming that site is cleared, one of those, we have to have it cleared for wetlands. In the little valley that goes to the tank in the new site, there's probably a little bit of a wetland area. If that's the case, we'll have to bore under it or dig around it or something like that. There's a lot of environmental strings on all of these projects, especially when you have grants involved. So, you have to play by their rules. Just going through the steps. If you were anxious to get going, we'd probably, you know, be preparing plans right now so that we can be bidding this, but knowing that, you kind of said that we're not in hurry to do it right now, it's more so just giving you updates. Normally, we just manage these things, get through, I don't think they do a lot, but it's just part of it. So, I guess, just that for discussion. Any questions, concerns? When we have the site cleared, acquire the property, and then begin plans and specs of bidding. Wintertime's a really good time to bid. It's probably a one-year construction project, so. If we fit this project in January, February, they'll have it up and running next year with, you know, seeding and close-up the following year.
But we want to wait for period of money to see what happens. Wonder. So, would we want to even put it up for bid this winter? Because they're not gonna, companies aren't gonna stick to that bid for over a year.
No, I would. No, we'll just see what's happening, we'll just let you meet this winter, see what's going on. Alright. Then generally, the only other thing is that we got some bids on insulating water service sites. I know Monty shared that solicitation package together last time. Got two bids, six locations that we know of that are freezing problems, two bids. We can't remember how many we solicited, maybe eight or nine contractors or something. And these are small enough that we're not required to, you know, go through the closed bidding process, we just got quotes for this. So, the one bid we got from V E K out of Dickinson was about eighty-five thousand bucks. And the second quote we got from Tan was for seventy-six thousand bucks. Tan being the low bidder, I did ask him what the bid would be if we didn't do the paving. The idea that, usually the, when you do an underground job like this, there's coordination between underground guy and paving guy. That usually raises the price, so in this scenario, if we went with Tan's just underground price, we'd have to worry about patching ourselves next year. So, that cost is fifty-eight-six. And I guess, that's what I know at the moment.
I can't recall. Is there anything about taking existing? I talked to a couple of people that had lived up there since they won. And supposedly, it was at grade, and then they come in and raided about a foot off, and ended in the pit. So, they, they lost a foot of sand grade. Does this include any digging out and backfilling with not-sand?
Uh, no. That happens a lot where a rural section road, and they put an urban section road below the road and put in curb better. If it's not done thoughtfully, this happens, so they should probably have insulated at that time. What I would do, so our detail, what it showed was digging out and digging down to a foot within the pipe and then putting in insulation boardroom, the width of the trench. We do this a lot, I mean, it's effective, it should work. It's not cheap, just because it's...
It's kind of interesting, this did not affect a couple of tenants until a few years ago. It's been okay, and I, first question I asked was, could it have been the amount of snowfall and insulation from snow? And they said, well, I don't think so, they have less snow, so I, I don't know. I was just trying to Q and A the situation, because I wasn't around on that development most of the time.
The snow insulates, keeps it from freezing.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that they're just too shallow. When we design stuff now, it's seven or eight feet deep, and I'm sure it's less than that, and I'm sure it's freezing the corporation right in the middle of the street, where it always does.
I had talked to one individual that is freezing, he said, your thing doesn't work, you have to stay straight.
And that's how you've been managing it for hours, just telling people to run their faucets and give a break on their water bills. But if they're gone for a week or a month, it doesn't work. Or if you get to do that, it freezes. You know the cost, and I guess, I don't know if you're ready to make any decisions yet or not, but I mean, it's, it'd be ten thousand bucks a piece if you don't...
It's not a question. Dave, do you know, you guys have been in there, you've run water through, is it freezing right at the main? Or is it freezing further? Because the...
Well, some of it seems like it is past the curb stop, seemingly, we always get through the curb stop before we get raised.
Okay, because you know, you're just gonna insulate the main, and that's it, and not the lines coming off, you know, that we're not really solving the problem.
Would we insulate up to the curb stop?
Would you insulate?
No.
Okay, that's my question, is, instead of just doing the...
But not beyond the curb?
Right. Because we've been noticing that it's not freezing past end of the yards.
Most of the time, yep, it's below the street. The process is deeper below the street. So, yeah, you have to put the water main to the curb.
So, you said Tan is fifty-eight-six without, Dave?
Yeah, so you basically save eighteen thousand when not doing asphalt patching. Which probably is a fair price for the asphalt patching, so I don't think you save much. I am trying to work on one more quote to get this done, so I think we can probably wait two weeks to the next meeting.
That's too much patching for us to do, correct?
That's quite a bit, yeah.
Because we have to actually get that plan, stuff that's been here.
If we can nail Williams down and possibly even do some of that on Beck Tole's in Allen here.
Yes.
You'd need even a better price with any luck.
How long the strip was that again? It's ten foot by, how many hundred feet?
Uh, well, we just had a bid to six, so somewhere on one side of the street, somewhere on the other side of the street. You know, sanitary's down the middle and the water main's on the side. So, we, we just set a maximum width of ten feet for these. So, if they're really, really good, they could, minimum of four, maximum of ten.
I know a couple of years ago, there was, we were talking about like a heater or a goal inside the one.
So, we, we talked about that here earlier this spring, and the Health Department did not like that idea. Because when you put that in-house and then ran it through, you'd be running it through the curb stop. And the curb stop is the city's way of shutting down those lines. So, they, they didn't think it was a very good idea.
Do you want to take action tonight, or should we wait and see if Jared and Monty come up with something?
I'll wait for another two weeks and see what, three weeks, what's coming up.
So, the question I have is, I guess, who's gonna agree for this, is it gonna be like special? I see it as, it's our, our problem, in my opinion. I don't know how we put that back in the homeowners and get on the curb stops. Well, I mean, it's the same thing as if you get a new, I guess, water line. Water main, I guess, in the street, although all the buildings back to, you know, down the other way. My initial response, not thinking deeply into Casey, is we need to pay for it somehow. I, I didn't think about assessing maximum, I'm not sure everybody else has thought so.
It's unfortunate the problem is with us folks here at this table tonight, it should have been fixed many years ago.
Well, it's like Casey says, you know, the homeowners in peace are getting assessed on these road repairs that we did. And some of those were, you know, it was clear when they did the construction on it this time, that the original work in some of those areas was poor. You know, so, one, one could go down your, your path and say, oh, it's a city problem if we allow poor quality roads to be put in back in the day and stuff like that. But we didn't.
But I don't think you're talking about the road so much as the insulation of the main. And that, the main has always been the city's responsibility.
Yeah, and I mean...
And that, and you'd probably have to split the bill up that way.
Well, I know that...
And the city pays for the main, the people pay for the repaving or whatever, if you have to, but I don't know, it's always been... My bill has always been, the city pays for the main, I get to pay for the recovering of the street.
Well, I know we had, not long ago, Rose and Oz, you know, on their, on their, I guess, on their, I guess, like sewer line, you know, and our stance was pretty firm, that it's all on him, you know. And that was kind of like right at the main, you know. The block he was at.
The difference there is that it is property owner's responsibility to the connection at the sewer main. Where, under our policy, it's property owner's responsibility from their property to the curb stop. Everything from the curb stop, all his arms. But, like you said, somebody said, you know, if we didn't dump Alcoa Woods Drive, that was assessed, we put in water and sewer, that was assessed. And that was a water main, it's sewer main, so.
And was that new? Yeah.
Well, you know, even on this, even on this last, I guess, project that we did in town, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, up by the church, I think we, we, I guess, redid some sewer lines or, or like water lines, and that was then, that was paid by us. Every time you do a project like that, you do something different, you set a new precedent in the year. Hands are tied, you know, it'd be almost nice to say, homeowner, you pay half, we'll pay half, and then, well, the next time you have a project, then you assess it, and what happened paying half? And helping the guy out, and so it's...
This one's, this one's kind of weird, because, because of the issue up there, we've directed the homeowners to run their water. And that they would be compensated by the city for the increased water bill. So, it's like, well, if you're paying for it there, you're basically saying it's a city problem.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
It's a city problem, but I mean...
So, then, then if you, if you fix it, if you, but if you fix it now, if I were the homeowner and I'm gonna get assessed with specials through, through the roof, I might say, no, I'd rather just run my sink or whatever, since the city's paying.
Yeah. I think in the long run, you're money ahead if we fix it. Than letting the water run at six residents or five residents all winter long.
You know, it's like back in the, I guess, back in the, I guess, nineties or, I guess, when, when all that is like water line was like tore out, and then polyline, I guess, installed, you know. That was on, I guess, owner of the property, would have paid that back. Well, it's definitely something we're gonna take into consideration, I don't know if that's nice, but...
Well, just one thing to keep in mind, because it's water, it's, they can't protest out. So, if you decide for them and do it under specials, they're stuck. If it's not like a street improvement where they can protest out against special people. So, you are really the body in charge of how it's going to be built.
There are other steps though, then, if you're gonna do a special assessment, you would have to create a district and...
You'd have to go through the steps, you'd have to go through the, yeah. And get a, I don't know if you can tell me funny, you can get along, or...
Maybe in this instance, because the city has been footing the bill for the water, maybe it's, it's something that, maybe the special assessment group or somebody does some analysis and says, the city will pick up this percentage of it, and the homeowner this percentage of it, because you say in the long run, well, probably in the long, long run, because if, at this dollar amount, what we're paying for those water bills each winter, it would take a lot of winters to pay for this, in the long, long run. So, maybe there's mutual benefit there. The inconvenience disappears for the, for the citizen, and...
But you're also limited as a city as to how much you could pay in specials, so it's like twenty percent. So, projects, so. You can't pay fifty percent.
I see. Okay. That's that sales tax portion of it?
No, no, that's, that's under the Century column, it's not a special assessment.
So, is it only that footage that freezes all in the winter? Is it, or can the whole street start to freeze? So, who are you gonna special, these five or six people? Are you gonna special the whole street because it is the main? I, I mean, I'm just wondering, if they wouldn't run water and they'd let it freeze, would it start freezing down the line? Or freezing down the other way? I, I don't know.
Never seen a water main freeze. So, it's you, it's, it's always the surface lines.
Okay, so if they wouldn't trickle, would it start freezing all the way down the street?
I don't think everybody...
Is it deeper at one end of the street than the other, or?
No, it's just, it's the main, you know, like, the main is usually a six, it's a six-inch water main.
Okay.
It's really hard to freeze a water main.
Okay.
And there's enough water movement, you have moved water mains so...
So, why are only five freezing on that street and not? Okay, I'm just wondering.
Usage, yeah, it's...
Okay.
Soil type.
Okay, I really think it has, it's contributed to soil type and the depth of the main, or depth of the line. That's my honest...
And when, usually when they, when they freeze, then they, they really freeze, they just, it takes off on you.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you know, it just, it starts in one spot. And you're killed.
I mean, you know, Buster, Dave, they're prone to solid.
I don't believe so. So, what are we waiting three weeks on?
See if it gets another price from another contractor.
It just, yeah, so you know, there's one company that's really interested in bidding, but they...
Didn't read the specs.
They changed their mind at the last minute and, you know, I'm, we may have to just reject the bids and, and do it again. But I, I'm just trying to negotiate with one of them, or encourage one of them to put in a bid here.
Mr. Link, do you have something?
I'm just kind of curious on this, because I knew for seventeen years, there was only one person, his first name is Sam, I can't remember his last name, he worked at the elevator.
Yeah.
And he was on Sunflower Lane.
Who was?
This, this would freeze up if we didn't let it run. But no one else up there in that Christmas second edition, to my knowledge, ever had a water problem.
I can just start one.
Oh, one's, yeah, like pretty regular.
Melissa has it.
Oh, so this is...
But before...
Not on every quarter bid, on the seventeen years I was on the commission, no. So, something changed.
Yeah.
It's just strange.
It is.
That's all I got. I'll just hang up though.
And we'll wait and see what we can give your back to you by the next meeting, please.
Sure.
And also, we need to think about how we go forward with entities with or without asphalt, doing these bids, and how, how we're gonna date forward, who we think's responsible. Who's gonna be the bad guy? So, it's just a little bit of... Five B, B S E requisition number eleven.
Based on the pay estimates, our final requisition, since we've closed everything out, Jared said there'd be a few dollars for engineering yet, but we're pretty well done as well. Will be thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and zero cents. Any questions?
So, then, so Monty at the top of that, so, so, I guess, I like nine point nine million?
Right, that's what the loan was for.
That's what our loan is.
That was, that's what we were approved for, yeah.
That's the one that we...
No.
Okay.
No. That's...
I saw that too.
That's actually, it's this amount here, Casey, in the resolution. Six point one million.
Dick, we're gonna pay B and D with a motion.
I don't believe in money, probably.
Yeah, so move it.
Uh, motion by Wolf, second. Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovindour.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Five C, annexation.
We still got the...
Resolution?
Yeah, we need to take that. We need to formally send this to the special assessment committee for their work. So, it will be the six million, one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and nineteen cents that they will be determining the benefit for every property owner in, in the city.
And that's the amount after the sales tax?
That's after the reduction, the ten percent reduction in the sales tax, yes.
Make a motion to submit that to that committee.
Motion by Keller. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovindour.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now, five C, annexation. We've had a lot of discussion about these areas and locations. Mr. Link, you wanna?
I, I have no specific question or answer, but I think you guys, you folks are pretty much in the know of situations.
So, everybody has the map. And you can see the areas that were, that are highlighted.
Yeah, basically, it was the areas discussed. We have the two north of Highway two hundred, uh, Ninth Avenue, Antelope Drive. The one south of Highway two hundred, near the bulk tanks, the Fitter Row bulk tanks. There is the area over on Seventh Street is still questionable because of the legal work and descriptions of that are really messy. So, it's a matter of, do we go off those descriptions, do we just...
Do we just define a line and have the, a Mr. Link survey and do a boundaries, meets and bounds or something for that? Then we do actually own the property here where the station one is, but it has never been annexed into the city. We want to do that. And then there was one little piece over here when all these other things were done. That isn't included in the description either. We've now annexed all of this right away, but this little bitty piece would still be out.
Which one are you talking about?
Right over here on the end of Eighth Avenue. Yeah. So I guess the question is, how do you wanna proceed over here on the east end of town? Do you wanna include that at this time, or do you want? How do you wanna proceed? Basically, most of the other legal descriptions are done, uh, Mr. Link has created. Plats, annexation flats for these three properties along Highway two hundred already, they're completed. So it'll just be a matter of how we wanna do these other ones. These, you know, they're basically defined, it won't take us very long to prepare an annexation flat for those. This is the interesting one over here on Seventh Street where portions were abandoned. Properties were changed back and forth and. Descriptions were never the same or never closed.
Well, I guess the question I got for Ken, I guess, mean, or in the board, I mean. What if we would just say that the legal, I guess. Description is gonna be this, this, I guess.
Oops, sorry. I was trying to get bigger here.
Would be this here, I guess.
Nope, that's the rest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think it was that big, but. This, you would call that the legal, legal, I guess. Legal.
Well, if, if you folks wanted to do that. You know, you could certainly do it, but. I recall one of the criteria for people protesting an annexation is. Where do they get their access from to the property? Where do they get their fire protection? And where do they get their police protection? And there's maybe some other criteria. So if you would annex a piece of property. Someone could protest that. Annexation because. Of the requirements to have the ability to annex. So if you would clear out what is that north-south quarter line out there, east of the Weidrich. Uh, and Anderson property out on the east end of that subdivision, uh, that addition of Huber's first addition. You would be annexing property that the access comes down Seventh Street to the end of the city limits. And then goes along the section line right away, which they have perfect right to travel. To access their property. So it's your justification, if you feel you have justification to annex property because of the. It falls under the criteria, then that's fine. It seems like a little, an easy way of doing it, but. And it would be, absolutely, Commissioner, it'd be, be a quick, easy way.
So what are we gonna hear from the landlord, or what's, what's gonna be his biggest position?
What benefit does he get?
Right.
He's already got the benefit. Access, police and fire protections.
He already has it.
And he hasn't paid for it.
That's Ken.
I think in this case here, you know, there, there's two different landowners. North of the old highway is, uh. I think it's Manhattan, really, here, but it's a different landowner than south, and south, I believe, is Lester Hire. And, and I think that's just split, so you would have to justify a benefit to both of those entities.
And I'll scan them, okay?
Okay, okay.
Basically.
I mean.
Lester Hire doesn't have to set anything back there. And I don't even.
Or you have to put it back where Ken, where he shows. But it's, as I understand it though. That's really a mess and we're, we're just really not sure what the legal, I guess, like boundary lines and the. Owners are. Of these as properties. It sounds like there's multiple in there.
Whose property is beyond those two green spots? Is it the same individuals to that sexuality case you don't know?
No. So also, if you extend it further to the east, uh, what, what makes it any easier then? You still have that segment that's in green right now that's. And murky? But you're just annexing to a quarter line, so there's your description to this quarter line. Okay.
To get out of the working, working.
Yeah. But somebody still has to determine what the city tax value would be for each of those foreowners or however many owners there are for that whole. All you're doing is you're simplifying the description that gets annexed in the city, but somebody still has to work through that whole mess. Okay. I think you're challenged to, it's good for the, the simplicity of it, but I think you're challenged to. Introduce landowner benefit to the annexation process there.
To a degree, yeah.
I guess another question is, what is the drawback? I mean, if they don't get anything, are they losing anything? You know, is it gonna cost them more money to pay for taxes or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna take the fire protection, I mean, or the police protection.
But they're specialists for the whole city, they're gonna be dealing also.
The way that I, I also understand it is that we would have to. Survey in these lots, because we don't really know. What the sizes are or where they're at.
So what's, what's all of that added cost and stuff like that? The value then to the city of annexing those, to those segments is, is what?
So I think the survey was gonna cost four grand, Ken, is that right?
That estimate, whatever I put together.
Yeah. So. So I probably did see that back. Take a long time to do.
No.
Yeah, yeah, Ken, did you have another comment you wanted me?
I, yeah, I was kind of, I lost it here in a second, but, but. Yes, the, the statement that was made was. It's an easy way to get the total boundary of the city limits. But how the city would determine. The, a real correct. Area for each one of those owners would require a survey of their, their property and the divisions between, between their property. And some of those property owners. As far as I, they're in a disagreement where their, their property is. And that, again, isn't the city's problem that they disagree. But it, I say, in my opinion, it falls back on the city to have the areas and boundaries correct as much as possible. To report for taxation. And in my mind, if the city knows there's a problem, it should be corrected. Now, whose financial responsibility? It's not the city's financial responsibility in my mind for these landowners to settle their neighborly boundary. That's up to them. Really. Yes, it, going to the quarter line is easy for the city limits, it's pushing a problem down the road. And if there's nothing done with it, the problem will still exist down the road.
Wow, so then it's like, so then it's like right now, I guess. Tax roll, I mean, someone's paying the tax on that area of land back.
Well, there's.
To the county.
To describe parcels that are in Warren Weidrich's name. That he accesses through his present yard coming down Manhattan Drive. And he's paying those taxes to the county, not to the city. Okay? Then Anderson on the south side. He's accessing his garage that's not in the city limits. That does have more of a value to it than the Weidrich property. And he's accessing that through the city street, down Seventh Street. And for that property, he's not paying taxes to the city, he's paying it to the county. Now, what benefit does the city get from the county providing access to those pieces of property? From the county? The county doesn't reimburse the city anything for providing a street access to those properties.
No, but remember that Seventh Street is a section line. So it's open to public anywhere.
Yeah.
It's never been a closed section, so anybody could drive Seventh Street.
But it's had improvements on it.
Yes, but it's controlled by the city within the court limits.
Within the city limits, yeah. And the city has approved it, but that's the city's trust, but it's still an open section line in public, so anybody could drive.
So that wasn't affected when portions of that were vacated?
I don't know, but they're, they're, it didn't, it's not completely vacated, it's just. They're narrowed up on the north side.
Okay.
And then vacation does close.
Doesn't close, no.
It's still open to certain individuals who need to get to their property. So.
So the process for annexing this piece would be, we have to go through the process of putting out a public notification and telling these people that we are going to.
But for all of them, yeah.
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 And because they're not contiguous, I would. Suggest that each one of those parcels could be potentially protested out. Orders. It's, it's not one lump of land here, I'm talking about, here, you're talking about multiple parcels.
Well, does anybody want a motion, or it's never? I guess I'll, I'll just point out one idea, you know, if we go on the quarter lines, you know. And then those people that are already on the, I guess. Tax roll, I mean, for those properties, it'd be up to them, I guess, if they wanted to get it straightened out if they're gonna. They're getting.
Mm-hmm.
Paying the tax, the other guy is blocked, but. Yeah, I don't think we wanna get involved in that at all. Yeah, sure.
I would agree with that, that's their, that's their baby.
I have no issue with bringing Anderson's garage into the city limits, but it's that, it's that big chunk of the Lester Hire property is my, my biggest question mark. Yeah.
Following, following that easy quarter line path, would it be harder to? Just go right up to so that north quarter line would. Meet right at the northeast corner of the Weidrich property, or is that gonna be harder yet? You ever seen it? Ken?
I think that was the idea, is to go over like this and then up.
Right, but I mean, up. Don't, don't follow the quarter line, go to the northeast corner of Warren's, right there, monkey?
The green corner.
And go straight south. Is that harder? I, I'm not a surveyor, an engineer, or whatever else, can a guy do that? Well.
I, I thought the intent originally was to incorporate just to the east side of what is the Anderson's property. And, um, I don't know that lady right off, who lives there. You.
Lutner.
No, no.
Lutner. Current management, Lutner. Or Lutz.
Yeah.
What, what was her first name?
Lutz.
Elizabeth.
Lutz.
And then Warren Weidrich. Because Warren's, it is, he has two parcels that, the only way he can get to him is through the city street.
Yeah.
And Anderson can get to his garage from the section line. And. Elizabeth, her property is a little convoluted on the east side. So from the, from the documents or records, I am not able to establish without a field survey. Where that east boundary is of Weidrich's, Elizabeth's, or Anderson's.
So we could establish, not going off the quarter line, we could go in, hit the northeast corner of Weidrich's property and go straight south.
But you're still hitting the part of Lester's property.
Right.
So you're just gonna.
A lot less.
Yeah, but you're gonna still get a little corner of it or a little piece of it, you know, if you're.
Do, it's not gonna end up with the same problem.
Yeah.
As taking a bigger chunk. As, as we've been a little parcel in there. It maybe seems harmless, but it's, it's.
So it's doing the same.
It's the same theory as taking a big chunk.
But you may have a better possibility of. Nobody protesting that out, going the smaller chunk versus the bigger chunk? No? Hard to say?
It'll be.
Your estimate, Ken, was that to do that field survey, to just find those east property lines?
Yeah. And my only test was to have them tell me what they think they own and where they own it, and I would. Go through and pick up the position of all the property corners from there and tie back to the west in the Manhattan addition. Which has really never have been done in all of those little parcel descriptions. And, uh, and only make the city limit. the city limit to the east boundary of where their monuments and their property is by that and use that as a description. And not worry about the division lines between Anderson and Elizabeth and Elizabeth and Whedrick. Because between Whedrick and Elizabeth, there's a little line in there, that's in question. And then there's quite a bit of question between Elizabeth and Anderson.
I think that's, I think that's the way to do it. Because I, I don't see the, the mutual value of continuing further to the east on any of those properties, even, even if it makes it a nice straight line for the city boundaries and stuff. But what you're doing is basically just correcting an oversight for, for many years where the edge hasn't been truly defined.
The only thing is, though, I mean, at that price stake, it's probably better off just to leave it just as it is.
Very well.
Yeah, it's not very, it's a return enough for.
So are you looking for just to proceed with the Gowan and Meisner properties and over there, or?
No.
Are you still talking about this little?
All of them are marked in green. Or if you want to make a motion and leave something out, you can act the way.
I'm just wondering.
Ken, that's.
Thought there was over on the east end of the Hoover second edition. There's a little parcel that has been, the same.
Yeah. Leave it alone.
There's this one, there's this one.
And I thought we had discussed leaving those for later time to work a little bit more on them. But we were mostly talking about the Gowan and the Meisner property and the.
Lift station.
And then this little Steffen property.
Ken, can you see where I'm at? Can you see where I'm at? This was in question then too, that other half of that road, right? Down on the southwest corner?
Oh, Riverside? Oh, yeah. Those, again, those folks can only access that property through the city streets. They can't come from the, the south. I mean, there's the river down there, so they, they go past Anhydrous ammonia plant over here and they go south and there's.
No, that's definitely way over there.
That's where the road was started a few years ago.
Oh, 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 excuse me, yeah. Oh, that's, there's the little piece that was, the old description is not correct. And it didn't include that it'd be an avenue on the west side, sixth edition, is that correct? Sixth edition. And it would come from the south from Railroad Street, I think it is, and it would go north up to one of the blocks and then it jogs on over and it goes and includes the drainage ditch. And that part has never been defined correctly in the description of the city limits.
Can you clean that? No, I, no, I'm asking, if we don't clean that out, it gets to Simon's house.
The, you know, ridge on the west side.
The parking wreck.
My goal is.
Straight, straight south.
I thought so. Are you going to make a motion, Nancy?
But that's.
Who's bringing up other parcels? No, you're fine.
But that's just the fact of the description isn't right. It's already in our boundary, but, oh, it's.
It's not in the boundary correctly.
Okay.
It was along the block line, which was the east side of the avenue, not on the street boundary of the west side is the avenue and the Miller property. The city limit should have been on the common line between the city and the Miller. And it was to the east side of the roadway or avenue along the blocks.
But those residents pay tax, city tax. Is that how we're correct?
They do, but if you're, it's an avenue, if you want your avenue included in your city limits, then the boundary description should be corrected. It, it's not an occupation, it's not a use or anything in, in the day-to-day operation. It's, it's just was an oversight.
Is it going to bring us a bunch of tax money?
Is this going to bring a bunch? No, no.
I love it.
No, it's not. It's going to spend tax.
So you're incorporating what you're already on.
So I would make that motion to include the Gowan properties, the Steffen property and the Meisner properties.
Lift station.
And the lift station.
And the lift station, yes. I forgot the lift station.
Motion by Wolf.
And that's including the Whedrick in there?
No.
And that doesn't include the Anderson garage either?
No, because we can't exactly determine how we want to go forward on that stuff.
Give me a second. No, a second. Hearing no second, motion fails. Is that right? Okay, motion fails. Anybody else want to expand on that? Move to annexing the Steffen property or Gowan property. The Lagoon and the Anderson garage and those properties on the east going by the quarter line, which would include the higher property. They have a motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Wolf.
And included lift station number one.
And Meisner's.
I think Gowan, Meisner, and lift station one and the Anderson to the quarter line.
I think we have a motion and a second discussion, Mr.
I have a question about the, the Gowan properties. Does that affect any agreements with the county for the dyke or is that? No?
No, not that we could see anywhere in the documentation, no. Because the dyke stuff stopped at the Old County Road is my understanding. Where do we?
On the east side of the county road?
Yeah. Was my understanding that dyke stopped where the Old County Road?
He's got properties on both sides of that county road that's in green. East end, so.
Yeah, we're only doing the east side.
Oh, you're only doing the east side?
East side of that Old County Road, not Antelope Drive. We're doing west of Van Loof Drive up there, south of the creek, north of the highway to the Old County Road easement. And then east of Van Loof Drive, north of Highway 200. Here's the Old County Road easement. Here's our street.
The Old County Road is Jerry Cowan's drive.
That was always going north side.
No.
Right there. That's the point now there.
Yeah, that's an Old County Road easement.
Oh, County Road easement, yeah.
And that's where we're going to, is that County Road easement. From center, center.
The farthest you know.
B side.
Any, any agreements that affected that? That's really.
Okay, we need another discussion. So we have a motion and a second. Do you need more discussion? Local.
Stern.
Hi. Wolf.
Hi.
Kat.
Hi.
Hiller.
Hi.
O'Beir.
Hi.
Okay, moving on. Six eight. Local permits, St. Burns Church, for a round.
Closing to a two.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hiller, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. Um, reports. Water sewer.
Well, we have our, our new employee on board now that's been getting some exposure to both the garbage work as, as well as going around and doing some work with the water department, so. So far, so good.
Streets, summer survey.
I think this time.
Finance, listening. I was at, at the library board meeting here last week, Thursday, looking at a new AC unit. Make the next spring here, we'll see. A furnace probably would be this small and then also some LED, LED lighting as well too. And that lighting is probably going to be, I guess, the, I guess, and I guess caution and grant. They are busy, they're busy with, I guess, grant writing. They did get some, some money for, for, I guess, COVID, COVID-type expenditures, you know, Lex knee guards, automatic, I guess, faucets, whatnot. And then too, they would like to landscape the outside of the, of the, I guess, library there. They also would like volunteers to help manage, or manage, I guess, current, I guess, landscaping there. It's going to have gotten a little bit open up. Okay, is that sorry? Casey. Police fire, Forest Street.
Uh, I will be attending the next annual board meeting coming up by Monday. Other than that, nothing.
Buster.
I'll make the pass today.
Okay, down to ten A. Carrie Putnam from Jimmy's Lounge submitted a letter talking about some events she's going to be having. Hope you all had a chance to look at that. If you have any thoughts, she's she's trying to obviously do a good business and have events in our community and also be very cautious and thoughtful about the current environment of, of virus. I, you know, I think she can, I you know, she's going to try to serve all those people without doing the buffet. It's going to be a lot of work for her, which is her choice, but I don't see. She asked if we would shut it down and I said we would shut it down if the governor had more stipulations on events like that. But so like, I said, that's the only reason I think we would step in. I would see if anyone else had any other thoughts.
And I guess I had talked to her. Her main concern was she's still looking at her bingo. You know, how she's going to proceed with that. She does have her tables distanced. She said she can set up a few more tables to accommodate so that the number of people she had last year, so she can accommodate those if they choose to come. But she is trying and they do wipe down a lot. They do try and social distance. So.
I, I just told her, I, proceed with caution. I, I appreciate her keeping us informed.
Yeah.
You know, there's no permitting or anything from us, so I guess unless we have a lot of major complaints from people or it does get very busy and packed and it's for the big names, I know that. And I know, I think she can try to social distance all she wants, but you've been in there, you know, in between bingo rounds, there's sixty people at the bar.
Yeah, and I'm sure Joel with the Hazen Works Plus will also try and figure out a way to do her bingo so that people don't all have to stand up there and buy their cards and, you know, I mean, I'm sure she'll set up guidelines too, but.
I think just proceed with caution.
Yeah. And as it was pointed out, everyone who walks in that door is twenty-one years of age. They need to make their own choices at some point. And, and masks are, you know, they can wear a mask if they want to.
These, these are the events that help her keep her door open. I, I do not want to be the person to cause her to have to close the doors.
Yeah.
So we're just, are we just kind of putting our blessing in her, moving forward then? All right, thank you. All right, ten B, the dance size of letter that you guys all received a copy of about the county losing funds?
There was talk in the email about a public meeting with their commission and support for them. I haven't heard anymore as to the date or time has been selected for that meeting. So I guess this is more informational for you at this point from us.
I think this letter has gone out to many different groups. The same information even with different letterhead on it to help Anderson not receive one also. I think we just continue to see what pick them up and ask, see what they ask of us. So then I guess, I guess, I guess, I guess the reason why we want to come.
Same as us, the best ones coming in.
With my understanding. Trying to follow their meetings gets interesting.
Moving on, eleven A, section line closure hearing. And that's going to be in two days at the county commission. And then if the Curtis Siler area section line that gives use for agriculture accessibility. You saw the letter that Monty and I kind of put together that we submit, you already submitted that card, Monty, to the county?
No, I haven't.
Okay, just going, if anybody wanted changes to that, please, I won't be bolted away tonight. So we have many citizens that live in that area that if that section line does get closed, does that mean all egg traffic would have to go through down paths, Jensen's and Mark Olson's, Brody Brant's? That's Anhydrous tanks, that's all equipment. And that's mud coming out of the field also onto the streets. And I, I just don't see a reason why we'd want to let that section line get closed. It's, farmers, there's several landowners that would not have any other access to their land other than through the city streets. So it just doesn't make sense to me. I think I understand why he wants to close it. Yeah.
Pat, just before that, I just add a comment that just coincidentally, on my way to my place, a truck was hauling hay up that.
Up what?
Particular place.
Okay.
Up that section. I don't know how he makes it through there actually, because it's kind of.
Yeah.
Pretty close.
Yeah, it is, and I know that there's, there's corner posts that are really tight in there to get through, but I know that the county has been on site to look at that last week. And so even though they may be improving it to make it more accessible for more modern, bigger equipment to get through there. But I, I don't see how we can not submit a letter to be in opposition of this. Unless anybody's changed or needed to make this letter, that's what we'll, we'll let submit that for a reason. I don't agree with you. Okay, all right, thank you. And I'll try to get to that hearing as well too. Uh, twelve A, first put a public health insurance trust employee benefits. I'll let you guys pick that up.
I've pretty much covered everything in my notes. We had a conference call with the Hayes company who's working with North Dakota Insurance Reserve regarding the public and, uh, public health insurance trust. It basically creates a trust for the school districts, other political subdivisions to work together to control healthcare premium costs through, through the larger group. Basically, it's set up, we would have to pay a portion of claims upfront. They do build in a three to six percent annual inflation rate, which as I indicated in the notes is pretty much what we've been at now the last, since 2011. So it's just a matter of, they do have other options as far as plans. You can mix and match plans. We can keep the exact same plan that we have now. They guaranteed for 21, our premiums would stay at the rate they were this year, but after that, you're looking at a three to six percent increase.
And that's using the, the pool of participants then for the statistical modeling?
Correct. They, they went back over three years of claims from the 47 entities that said they were interested.
Okay.
And came up with those, that information.
So we immediately would be jumping into a, a system that would be less cost to the city at this point?
At this point, yeah. But.
With a similar growth factor.
That's great.
Okay.
If, like I said in the notes, the one thing that would be nice, you wouldn't face those times like 2014, 2015, all of a sudden we had a 20% increase in health insurance premiums. If it can be managed decent and you're looking at that three, instead generally it's right around five, to be honest, but they put in three to six. So, I mean, you can budget for a 6% increase and still know where you're going. Gets a little hard when you get all of a sudden 15, 20% now, where are you?
This would be for 2021 calendar year?
Yes. It would be effective, our, our open enrollment is actually, we start October one, they would carry us till January one at the same, the same way we'd be having.
So I guess, I actually have a couple things, I guess, as Blue Cross and I guess, Tom too, that I guess we might be switching?
Yes.
And they were okay with it?
They are aware, yeah. They still maintain this program. It's still Blue Cross, Blue Shield, yeah.
And then two, on the money down, I guess, let's say in, in 10 years, I guess, we don't want to be in this, I guess, like trust, are we able to get that money back?
Yeah, any money that we put in is maintained for us, so if it hasn't been spent on claims for us, yes, it's there.
So is your suggestion, Mike, that I would do the same?
So, so Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they, they get out of the facilitating of the program directly to the city of Hayes.
Yeah, we don't deal with them directly. They still have to plan.
With this entity that's, that's putting this all together. So the benefits of them is, I mean, for them to, to be in business by putting this consortium of cities and whomever into this, this mix, they're getting what out of this?
I don't like anybody, they're getting a small percentage out of it, but it's basically maintained by the state of North Dakota through the North Dakota Insurance Reserve. So yeah, there are some.
So, so one could argue, they've, they've done their number crunching and said, we can save this much, they're saying this, and we're going to give so much of that savings to these customers and then a portion of that savings becomes the revenue stream for, for them?
No, no, that's, all of the funds still stay with the Bank of North Dakota.
Okay.
You know, they charge the same as Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they charge their percentage for administration of it. And then every, all the rest of the funds stay in the trust.
Gotcha, okay.
And there were some benefits because doing the trust, we don't pay some of the taxes that we do now directly through Blue Cross, Blue Shield, that is taxes through the insurance commission that are paid that we actually save by them running it through the trust. So that's where some of our savings comes in, at least this.
The way that I guess, understand this is right now, it's like Blue Cross, you know, we're in this large pool, that's, I mean, some of our state, who knows where else, you know, and based on the claims of all the, I guess, members, you know, that's what the premium is going to be next year. But now we just have this pool of all these towns and schools, you know?
As long as they're all healthy.
As long as they're all healthy, or they're going to stay down low, yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of, it's kind of like our program.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're also in the city.
Yeah. Hayes company manages for basically.
Yeah.
Got it.
Or advices, Jim.
And we found an avenue for all the supplemental programs as well?
Yeah, they can actually, the voluntary programs that we have now through Aflac, they can still be maintained. They did put out for bids all these voluntary programs as part of the trust and they're actually working with MetLife because their, their costs were a lot lower than some of the other ones. So people will have the option of staying with their Aflac for their voluntary programs or changing them that way.
Got it.
Okay, so if you want to make the same two here, make a motion. Move to, uh, join the, in the public health insurance trust. Motion by Stern.
I'll second that.
Second by Heller, discussion. You know, I guess the only thing that I'm, I guess, worried about is as I understand now, is that with Blue Cross, we're wearing, it's like a grandfather type of policy, but the way it sounds, that won't.
Yeah.
That will be.
Yeah. It won't be grandfathered, but it really won't affect us because we have the same plan and our employee count is still lower. Yeah.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Heller.
Aye.
Hat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye.
Carry. Will be Forest Report appointment, Alex Hermes is. I'm not too much, he and, well, except for the appointment, uh, Forest Report.
Correct.
So we still are looking for another.
Yes, I'm still working with Mike to find one more here.
If we want to go on that, we will let you volunteer.
Can I be on it?
Absolutely.
I would be on it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So then we would just have to, as a commission, then endorse that, make a motion to accept them, point them to that board?
Still moved.
For the two of one?
Yes.
I'll second that.
I'm motion by Hack and a second by Heller. To accept the House service and then Fisher Wolf on the Forest Report. Roll calls.
Hat.
Aye.
Heller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye.
Prove the bills.
Monty, that top one is actually sold out of the donation fund.
Yes. There is one for Lauren and one for Steve Gowin for working on a heritage park. They still had funds in there that they had raised. After paying those, they still have $6,036.07 of the funds that they had raised.
Motion approved.
Motion by Fisher, Hat. And second by Fisher, Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Hat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Heller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye, motion carried.
Any adjournments?